Good evening, it's seven o'clock. We have a call and we'll call the planning board meeting for order. First up for general information is Mr. Galinas of Valley Building.
Okay, so I'm here, actually, let me get these out. Regarding 101 East Street in Hampton. Okay. Oh, okay, that's the green building on the corner of East and Route 11. Yeah, quite deep off of the highway. Very close to the corner, yes. So we recently purchased the property at 101 East Street, which is, as you just said, an old building located at the intersection there across from East Hampton Savings. It's the greenhouse with detached, what's been used as a commercial space in the past. The house was rented up until recently and the back building was at one point kind of a small niche record store, it was called the Punk Independent Records at the time.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, okay. So the building, as we know, has been run down, has been an eyesore for years. We acquired it from a New York-based real estate developer who had purchased it in speculations of putting a law green there at one point. So what our intent is to continue the use of the house as a residential structure as it's been used in the past and take that back building and restore that and use that as an office space for our offices. We want to retain the colonial character of the space and improve the aesthetics of that center corner in town. We're asking basically for a waiver, site plan approval for the initial stage of our project as there'll be no exterior expansion to the property and the use will basically continue as it has in the past. The way we kind of foresee this is doing this in basically three phases. Phase one is the existing residential house, which we'd like to repair and renovate, again within the existing footprint there. We're looking to temporarily run our office out of that space while we renovate the back barn space. During this phase, the exterior will see colonial restoration of that building, of the entire structure.
The back building and the front building?
Yeah, so they're not connected, they look connected.
I know, they're not, right, they're separate.
Yeah, yeah, those two structures, right, barely, very close. So back building being the part that I would say is, if this is Route 9, even the house and the back building. So what we're looking to do is basically replace the roofing, the siding, the windows of the structure, maintain a complete colonial look and feel. So colors would be a dark charcoal to a gray, the slate roofing shingles, dark charcoal to a slate shingle, maintaining all the trim details of that property, so all the white colonial corners that it has, it has a wider corner and a detail, with a Harvard gray or a deep granite gray exterior siding in the Clonverge style. The back building, we would either match in color, do a barn red in tone for the back structure. The windows would be a high-end architectural black sash style colonial window with colonial grills and we'd like to add some dim carriage style lighting to the exterior of the building for aesthetics. When it comes to signage, I would come forward separately with that once it's designed and bring that to the board in a separate session. Phase two would be the renovation of that back building that we're talking about, kind of what we could call a shop or a barn or retail space. So that's located adjacent to the residential structure, that was that record store space. No exterior footprint changes to that as well, basically renovating and repairing that to look like, we'd like to maintain the barn look but put the offices in there. So at that time, once that's done, we would operate our business out of that location. The house would then continue to be renovated as a residential. Phase three is just something we foresee in the future, is just potential expansion down that stretch of land, but that's something that we would look forward, bring forward with site plan approval and things like that at that time.
Okay. I'd love to see that building looking good again. It is a bit shabby, even that. Realizing you've put a lot of money into this building and I'm sure you're aware of the plans to expand Route 9.
Yes.
And you will probably, no, not probably, you could be impacted.
Yes.
That's your risk, that's your business, yeah, that's your business, don't.
Understood, yep, yep.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. You're just going to use your office space and no others?
That barn would just be our own offices.
How many, how many people?
So, property manager, myself, and we have administrative assistant right now, so right now there's three of us, there's a bookkeeper that comes in a few times a week. So there's three of us full-time.
And one part-time bookkeeper. I don't, I mean, because they, the record store came in, they even had a little bit of, I think they leased that plan approval for that if I remember.
We did.
And there was never a problem with what little business they had, I'll leave it at that. It sounded like they didn't do a whole lot of, I think there was a lot of internet, if I remember what they said, that was really their stuff.
Yeah.
I have a problem waiting site plan approval for what you're saying because it's going to be an improvement to the property. Other comments?
No.
Well, just, the building is going to look like page two.
Bottom page. Just to clarify, so that's the basic color scheme, black sash, white trim. Structurally, it doesn't look like that, but that is a similar style building to that.
So you won't have the columns, the new building?
Right, well, this is, that building has a similar style, but it's, you know, it's a cape style versus that, so it has the corners like that.
Right.
You know, it has a similar style.
No, I'm saying you're not going to have these columns in front of it.
No, no, we won't have a porch, no. There'll be no footprint change.
You'll be, I know, you should imagine this, but you're basically going to look like this facade without the porch.
Correct. And either a gray tone like that or on the second page is the deeper gray. And I wanted to go all the way, the recommendation was that the soot and stuff from Route 9 will look horrendous in no time, so to go with a gray was a recommendation we had.
Yeah, and then think of that, you're probably right, especially being so close to the road, the salt spray is going to destroy the Russell Street side in no time. But it's still practically piled up against the building.
It's close to the road, yeah.
So do you want to take a look at the lighting, the opposing items?
Do you want to have any exterior lighting on the property?
What I really would like to do from an aesthetic standpoint was, I can borrow this one, was, and Bill had mentioned that, that we have to be careful with how it, how it kind of shines.
Shines for Route 9, yeah.
So I mentioned aesthetically, I would do, I would like to do some dim carriage style lighting, possibly along these corners or along here, but dim, not something that would be bright, more for aesthetic. As you get to the other side where you have entry and egress, we would put the normal bulbs, yeah.
Okay, I just realized that we may be coming back to you on these two sides saying, hey, it's too bright, you gotta do something, either dim or light, I'm assuming it's going to be LEDs?
Probably a warm, but I don't want it bright.
That's what I mean, so it's going to have to be like a, what do you call it, a low color LED, as opposed to a high color.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay.
And then this, you know, the signage I want to, we'll talk about separately, right now we just want to get the building improved, but the building being so close to the road, I think working with you guys on a proper placement for signage will be another discussion.
So I'm not participating, so. All right, I'm making motion to waive site plan approval for 101 East Street, Mr. Galinas. To waive for the following, based upon a determination, the proposed work constitutes an external enlargement of Western, exactly, no external enlargement. There's no external enlargement. Determined the proposed condition constitutes no external enlargement. Over the floor area. Leave that one. And it's to renovate with gray siding, white trim.
Black.
Black window trim. Carriage lighting.
Yeah, carriage lighting.
Dim carriage lighting. That's the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three zero with one absent and one abstention.
Is Stanley Mallett over there?
No.
No?
Don't recall.
He's got it collected in church every Sunday, so you might find a bunch of quarters there somewhere.
Okay, I'll take care of that. Next one is Mr. Clark of Steve Lewis Subaru.
Hello, guys. We're here to seek site plan approval for additional parking at the Buffalo Farm. We bet, I met a few weeks ago with the select board and they had wanted, they said I should seek out approval for a site plan approval for that lot, to have that parcel approved for additional parking. We started with them about a year ago, it was originally going to be a temporary placement for additional units. We then increased our allocation because we started selling all these units. Our original plan was to purchase the property next door to expand our lot and then modify our license, you know, with that build out at that time. That part fell through, so now we're at the point where we have a need for this additional inventory, but need to place a quote.
Do you own that property?
We do not, we're renting that property from Ted Croker. We're in the process of executing a long-term lease with him as well, with your, if we get the approval that we need, we're going to sign a long-term lease with him on that property.
Site plan approval allows for shared parking, but it doesn't really address off-site shared parking like that. You're really in effect opening a dealership across the street and according to our zoning bylaws, if only one, you cannot have another dealership.
With insurance. Yeah, if there's no retail that's done out of that lot, it's just storage. Yeah, if there's no customers brought to that lot, there's no retail done out of that lot whatsoever.
Do you, you know, what kind of leeway do you have where you could park the cars on that lot? Can you park them further off the road, where they're kind of out of sight, out of mind? Can we require you to put a fence up so that they're kind of hidden? So that people don't go over there and thinking, like you said, it's okay if somebody goes over there looking at your vehicles, and then that's understood, but that's what we want to avoid, because we wanted the traffic, and you want the traffic at your place.
Of course, yeah, it does us no good down there.
You don't want, does the town know good and you know good to have it over there?
How did they get there in the first place?
Exactly.
You didn't come to that, you just did it, right?
You'll have to forgive me, I don't know what the process was that was handled a year ago, Steve was handling that process at that time, I'm in the process of taking it over to complete this at this time, so. I don't know what processes they went through, Steve and I know, Steve and his attorney at that time were looking at the different options that they had available. We had, we were given from the select board approval for a temporary timeframe for that, but that timeframe has expired and that's why we're in the situation we are now.
So my recollection is that he just cut a deal with the owners of the property, moved the cars there, and when people started complaining about it to the building inspector, building inspector talked to Steve Lewis, was told that it was going to be a temporary thing, and rather than make a federal case out of it, the simple way to kick the can down the road was for the selectmen to basically say, okay, Tim, don't enforce the building, don't enforce zoning until spring. Now, I did talk with Steve Lewis's lawyer at one point about, just as you were saying, to try to see if there's a way to expand to address shared parking, to allow people to meet their parking needs with leased space as long as it is a, you know, long-term lease or something like that, and that didn't, didn't go anywhere that I know of. I never got back to me on that. He was going to look at North Hampton and see how they handled it.
Dave, Dave Noonan had talked to me about that and he mentioned that he was going to draft the proposed zoning bylaw for the shared parking for that, with, again.
Who was saying this?
David Noonan.
David Noonan's team's attorney, yeah.
How do you look at it?
Just around the corner from your office.
Yeah.
But we did make some concessions, even in the parking on the existing lot, they wanted more cars and we kind of let them come in tighter and.
One of the things that we were really concerned about when they came in, you're the messenger, so unfortunately you're probably going to get shot, okay? So I'll be straight out on this with you, so you don't feel too bad. We were very concerned about the initial site plan approval for the property and they came in with this elaborate plan, Steve Lewis Company, at the original site plan approval for the property, when they came in for the dealership, about how they're going to park the cars at the rear, they were going to park them like this, they could do like this, and it would only be on-site, we wouldn't have anything else off-site, because other dealerships, especially in North Hampton, I know, I think it's Ford, has parked them over at Dr. Doodle, we go over there, can't see them from the road, you go there for a funeral or a wake, and there's a lot of times, a number of cars parked in the rear, but they're way out of sight, out of mind, but in any case, we were concerned, we didn't want that to happen here. And Mr. Lewis and his friends and their site plan stuff was saying, no, no, we're going to be outside, we're going to be here, we're going to be confined, we won't be doing this. And it wasn't a few months after that they opened that lo and behold, they just showed up at the Buffalo Bison Farm one time, and not ten cars, but obviously a lot of them. And like Mr. Dwyer says, within on end, you know, it was a year, and oh, you know, now you're coming in here and we have a letter that we gave to the zoning enforcement officer dated 1919, 2016, that we sent to the building, to the zoning enforcement officer about the parking at the Bison Farm, and that was where to kind of help trigger some of the events, oh yeah, we're going to be out of there by April or May, we're going to be all done, it won't continue. You know, now it's eight months later and Steve Lewis Subaru was in here pleading forgiveness for violating zoning bylaw, I mean, if they'd come in a year ago and says, hey, you know, our business is good, we have to do this, what can we do? And instead they just, I get the feeling that they thumb the nose at the town of Hadley and said, we're going to do what we want and too bad. And that really bothers me when that happened.
Boggles me too.
You know, I understand, and we don't want to be negative to the business, but we would like businesses to be upfront. We have a problem, what can we do about it? And that didn't happen here, obviously. And Tom Hadley gets nothing for allowing this, there's no tax money, no cars, there's no, there's absolutely no incentive for the town to approve this, except Mr. Steve Lewis Subaru was asking for it, okay, because those are all, none of those vehicles that are over there are taxed, it's any kind of, you know, use, they're just, I mean, property taxed, but it doesn't have any kind of account for the town.
The additional storage is crucial for our continued success and our continued growth.
And on the flip side of that, I don't want, we don't want to be negative to the business, we understand where you are, but just, it just bothers me in a wrong way that we have to.
I understand, I understand why you guys feel the way you're doing, you're absolutely entitled, you're, you're not wrong in the way that you do feel. The way that it was handled up to this point, I agree, it could have been, it could have been and should have been done much differently. I'm the general manager of the store, my responsibility is for the staff that works there and for their jobs and to continue the success of these people that I, that I take care of. You know, we, without that additional storage, we can't maintain the volume that we're used to, we can't maintain the local clients that we've sold. When we moved to Hadley, our, our projected growth was nowhere near what we've been able to achieve at this facility.
Basically, business is good.
Business is unbelievable, you know.
Maybe that's, maybe that's not the proper site for your business then, if you're going to have this kind of exponential growth.
Yep.
Now, let me ask it up, I mean, so if you, you can give the site plan approval, we'll need a plan and we need two sets of mailing labels and a bars.
Yep.
So that we can mail stuff out, that we can give you application, which is a simple application. Are you here for the indefinite subdivision? That had been postponed to January 16th because they're not ready to go tonight, so there will be no meeting tonight, just so that you don't hang around if you don't want to.
They will be making an informal presentation, but it will not be a public hearing, and there will be no comments taken, because we're not going to, we're not going to open a public hearing tonight.
Okay.
We're going to be discussing the project.
Do the, pardon?
Going to be just.
Very briefly, very briefly.
I'm going to show you.
But you won't be able to make any comments.
That's all right.
Okay?
I'm going to show you the plans.
Probably not. No plans will be due. Okay. So, but you can say, I just don't want, I just want you to be aware, there's not going to be a great discussion on that, okay?
I appreciate it.
Okay. We unexpectedly found one of our members wasn't able to come tonight, so we're below strength for approving projects, yes. Okay. So procedurally, and I think this was an issue that came up with, between the building inspector and the town administrator at one point, one question is whether Steve, Steve Lewis Subaru is not in violation of its site plan. Everything that was approved for that site is.
Incompliment.
Is profit. So, well, it's almost like you need to have the owners of the, where you are parking.
Right.
Bring something forward.
Yeah, you could bring it forward, but it would have to be on their behalf and we'll need a letter stating that you can do this.
Right.
Okay, because we had, what happened once before was, believe it or not, it's a little quick story, somebody came in and applied for subdivision, we sent the notices out, the owner of the property comes in and says, you can't do that, I'm a lot surprised at it. It was some relatives that wanted something by their relatives' property and the owner came in and says, there's no way you're going to do that, I don't want that, and we're like, whoa. Okay, so since then, we've learned that if somebody comes in, such as yourself, you want to do that, just, you just need a letter from them saying that you're acting as their agent for this.
We'll be able to bring that in along with the lease as well.
Okay.
So are you saying that having the cars parked there so close, close to the road are no, not at all part of the marketing plan?
Not one bit.
People can see them?
We can turn them around, I'll park them at the back of that lot wherever you need me to do.
I can see them, they look pretty nice, I got them.
Honestly, the reason they're parked away the yard is because the owner of the property asked me to.
Yeah.
He didn't like the way we had them before, I just parked them for, you know, to make it where it's functional for plowing and to get in and out of.
I think they're a problem, the property's got a problem.
We want to make it, we don't want them to be, how do I say this, you can think about high, I don't know, I don't know the right answer to this.
Yeah.
I will give you a couple of things to look at. We don't want them, like I said before, where they're coming in on site and looking at the, purely looking at the car, it's not right for the town, it's traffic wise, nor is it right for your business, but we also don't, don't not want to make it unsightly. Something having cars parked there, they're brand new, I mean, they're not an ice wall by any stretch.
Right.
But want to make sure that they don't become a, what's the right word, attractive nuisance.
Right.
Okay.
We only park brand new Subarus there, you know, they don't, I don't want to say they don't attract attention, because of course all new cars attract attention, but there's nothing that stands out as far as what they're there, it's just parking. You know, we don't park any used vehicles or anything else that would look different or catch an eye, we just, you know, I think everyone, we probably all, as we drive by, we see it, you know, you see it out of the corner of your eye now, you know, it's not.
So figure some, some way to address that concern.
Well, even, even if he addresses it, Jim, the, the fact that the planning board received a petition, we didn't submit the, no more than two automobile dealerships within two miles of each other. The people were concerned that a business district is going to be more like King Street, Automart, and you're going to have automobile dealership after automobile dealership, blah, blah, blah. So this really, I don't see how you can get around that particular bylaw by calling it an auxiliary part. I mean, if, if the owners of the Buffalo Farm, they're, they're really going to be applying for the site plan, they're applying for an automobile dealership in effect, so you would have two automobile dealership next to each other, whether you call it it's yours or theirs, but I think it defies the, the intent of what the petitioners gave the planning board when they presented that bylaw to the town meeting. So that's kind of my editorial comment.
And I, I understand that, if we were retailing vehicles out of that location, I would agree with that statement, but again, there's zero retail, there's no customers that are brought to that lot.
When you had.
But you own our retail operation, you just told us, if you didn't have that lot there, your business wouldn't be as booming as it was.
As storage, yes.
If you're not very connected to your business.
It's crucial as storage, yes.
You had a chance to buy a parcel next door, what happened?
That fell through for reasons that I'm not in the know.
So we have recently approved a freestanding parking lot. So we know we can do it if we want, if we want to approach it that way.
We've got to look at, we've got to look at that closely, when I try to decide tonight, if the gentleman just applied, goes through the proceed process, and when we have the public hearing, we can review that in much greater detail and maybe we can even get a two cent comment from town council, if that possible, probably. So we'll meet again in two weeks, if you have the, if you have the information, you can apply that night, then we can schedule a public hearing.
So if you want to, the way to go through it, our zoning bylaw is online, the section is site plan approval, which I think is either six or seven, section seven.
Yep.
There's a menu laundry list of plan requirements in there. Not everything applies to everyone, but I think you can look through it and you may want to consult with counsel. I think that, and you were going to want to talk with the landlord, because it's being brought in their name, probably would be very interested in how this affects things like drainage on the site. This site was originally approved under the agricultural exemption to zoning, so we didn't look, and it was, it's just dirt there, it's not paved at that spot.
It's gravel, yeah.
It's gravel, it's just like a blank up, up T R D.
Well, there are three parcels there, that's parcel A, B, and C.
That's right. So the other part of it is that the, for various historical reasons, the, that property is broken up into three separate parcels. So you want to be sure that you are bringing the application in the name of the right party.
Plus now, the other complicating issue is the fact that the Chinese immersion school has drop off and pickup for their buses there too. So how much activity are we going to have, is that going to be exempt or is that going to be, well, that's, will be discussed at the, at the meeting.
So that affects things like traffic flow. But we also need a butters list.
I'm putting this on here.
Okay.
And Mr. Mitchakowski, who is probably the most, most prosperous pro-business member of this board, it's not me, called me earlier tonight and expressed his concern about this lot over there, just for knowledge, I'm going to sway him to.
Okay, so here's the application, it's very straightforward, and on the back, so you'll know, two sets of, so two sets of mailing labels and a butters, six sets of plates, what you're going to do is a kind of a letter from the owner that you can apply on their behalf.
Thank you.
And you can get the names of the butters, it's a butters and a butters to a butters within 300 feet of the property line of that site, you can get that from the assessor's office, they have a program.
If you want to see the assessor, they know exactly, we said you want a set of butters, they know exactly what you're going to need.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you, Joe.
We meet first and third Tuesday.
Everybody. Roderick Anderson, is sir?
Yes, good evening, yes, I'm Roderick Anderson, executive director of the Springfield Institute and president of Pioneer Valley Coral and Natural Science Institute. We're a nonprofit organization promoting education and research here in the valley. We're growing coral, we're aquaculture facility will be growing coral to assist researchers conducting proof of concept toward everything from cancer drugs, treating Alzheimer's, creating, providing coral to regional pet stores through our distribution networks, and educational programming, hands-on educational experience for high school students that are interested in the natural sciences. The facility itself will consist of. The facility itself will consist of fifteen, uh, ninety-six by twenty-four by twelve inch troughs where we'll be growing the coral out of. We're partnered with researchers currently from Northeastern, Harvard, UMass Amherst, um, and possibly Yale, that are gonna be doing their own proof of concept research and testing their, uh, their, their products as they move towards commercialization in our facility. Our two main researchers that we're working with are doing water filtration based on electro remediation technology. So, they're purifying freshwater groundwater, either coming out of your wells, or you could attach it to your in-home water pumps, or it could be scaled up for industrial use with, for instance, your new water system here in, in the town. It neutralizes all bacteria, uh, most heavy metals, and all chemicals. The other researcher from Harvard, she does real-time cloud-based sensors that reads up to twenty, uh, elements that are in the air, water, and soil. And that's basically what we'll be doing out of our facilities at the One Mill Valley location.
Okay, so you, what you want to do is you want to open a very mini micro research facility at the One Mill, the new office building on One Mill Valley, One Mill Valley Road.
Right.
And you're looking for basically an approval to do that?
Yeah, they, we already went through the, the town licensing and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
What chemicals will you be using there?
No, no chemical.
No chemical. So, you're just gonna be going basically coral?
Yeah.
And signage?
Any what?
Signage.
Yes, we'll have a sign at the ladder and in front of the, the door.
You can bring it. We, we can approve your use, but before we give you final approval, we'd like to see what the sign is going to look like on the building.
On the, on the front of the door?
No, on the front of the door, yes.
Okay.
With just a picture of the sign, or, or, an artist, whatever you want to use with dimensions.
Okay, it's, I believe it's four feet by a foot, like right above the door frame, you have the double doors.
Just, just bring a picture of that in at the next meeting, just to cover the final date, we can, we can approve your, your use tonight. How many, how many square feet?
It's just under twenty-five hundred square feet.
Well, it's a good portion of the building, though.
Yes, yes.
So, that already has.
Yeah, it'll be, the New England is only coral farm, actually.
How, how quickly does coral grow?
Yeah, I thought it took a long time.
It, depending on the species, uh, we're doing primarily, um, small polyp corals, the more, um, it, it could take up to two months, you know, before it's ready to be harvested and cut and put it, you know.
So, where do you, where do you get the coral from? The seed coral for that?
Yep, we get it from the sea.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, this isn't considered an invasive spe- invasive species, does it bring it in here?
No, 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 I don't, it won't grow in.
This is saltwater coral, right?
Yeah, these are all saltwater, there are no freshwater species of coral, so there's no risk of invasive species or anything like that. And we won't be dumping any water at all either. So, only, uh, we'll be replacing water as evaporation happens, but that's it, we won't be releasing any water.
Coral could do all those things.
Yes, it's, it's the new rainforest. It's the new rainforest, it's, uh.
I think the Great Barrier Reef, and that's just, that's just, that's an amazing thing.
It is, it is, and we're hoping at some point, if our projections reach, we'll be able to expand our operations and actually become somewhat of a, a coral bank, similar to, uh, the sea bank out in, uh, Switzerland. So, to have upwards of, uh, three hundred species of coral there, that. And because the Great Barrier Reef is, is dying off, that we will have.
What, what is your business being called?
Pioneer Valley Coral Natural Science Institute.
Okay.
Are there any more coral growing operations in?
Not in New England.
Not in New England?
Nope.
No, in Texas there's one.
Yeah, there is, they're big out, out west in California, Ohio, Florida, you know, so we will be the first ones here, so. Yeah, it's a relatively new industry, we call it the filtration and lighting requirements for the coral. So, yeah, the LED technology has reached that point where we can provide the appropriate light spectrums and everything, so.
What's your degree in then?
Actually, my PhD work is, is in anthropology.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you're gonna be, you're gonna be pretty, um, involved to know this kind of stuff, you're gonna be quite in-depth.
Yeah, well, I did the hobby, uh, for over twenty years myself, so, but after I got out of the military, a bunch of those guys kind of got into, you know, marine hobbies, yeah, so.
I'm smiling at that. As a hobby, my daughter's roommate got her PhD in coral, and, at Caltech, and she traveled all over the world scuba diving, and it was kind of fun, she said, so.
Yeah, yes.
I can see where you would have excellent research, but you'd have fun doing it, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna make a motion to waive site plan approval, uh, but then I'm gonna ask you to take this and fill in name, mailing address, business name and everything. So, I'll make a motion to waive further site plan approval and approve business use in the aquifer for, uh, the following, based upon a determination that proposed work constitutes no external enlargement of existing structure. For want of a better word, I'm just gonna say coral farm. Is that?
Yeah, that's exactly what we are.
Okay. Interior. Okay, um, there'll be no sign approval at this time, and you're using no processed chemicals in the aquifer.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that stuff could kill the corals, they did.
Okay, so that's the motion. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call it a favor?
Aye.
No, yeah, any guests? Vote to pass is four, zero, one absent.
Good. So, if you would just take this, fill in the top part, and, um, just drop it off and
Okay.
Leave when you're done.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the public hearing that's scheduled for tonight, um, the owner, Jan Duen, West Devitts Keller, and the developer is Valley Building, the public notice went out. We are going to directly postpone this public hearing without opening it to January, January sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven fifteen, right here. The reason for the, um, postponement is we need four affirmative votes, no, three affirmative votes out of five, um, for this to be approved. Mr. Dwyer is not participating in it. Uh, Mr. Mitchkowski couldn't make it tonight, so that leaves three of us, all three would have to vote in favor of it, not that you wouldn't get the three affirmative votes, but Mr. Mitchkowski has, uh, would like to participate, and there'll be no decision tonight anyway because some things are incomplete. So, rather than open a public hearing and make some legal thing that have to be accomplished, if we don't open it at all, but direct postpone it, then those things are different story. Uh, we'll just give a few comments to Mr. Jelena's. Um, I, my biggest concern about the whole thing with the subdivision, the details of a subdivision. But because you're over six lots, you need to provide, if everybody were eight lots?
It's eight, one.
So, one lot plus be, um, an affordable building. Now, you can do it onsite, or you can do it offsite, I understand you want to do it offsite. So, before we get your approval, we would like to know and have the lease ready or the wording for the permanent, um, what is the word for that?
Deed restriction.
Permanent restriction, have to register your deeds of where it's going to be, I'm assuming, you know, you're gonna, you know where you want to do it.
I hope.
Okay, so you're gonna provide, before we get an approval, we will let you know exactly where it's going to be with deed restriction to be recorded for them, okay, and how you're going to accomplish that. Uh, it doesn't have to be, you can do a rental, it doesn't have to be, because you've got eight building left that you're gonna sell, the affordable unit does not have to be a sole residence, it can be a rental.
Is the third option, the Affordable Housing Trust?
The Affordable Housing Trust is, is there is a housing, there is wording in the bylaw for an affordable trust. However, the trust does not exist.
Yeah.
And it may not exist, we don't know that. So, rather than say you could donate to the housing trust, um, right now, it's not there, so we're letting you, as a developer, know upfront, putting money into the trust is not an option in your case. So, you're gonna do either the unit on, within eight lots, or one unit off-site at one of your other purpose facilities that you may own, or you could buy something, you could convert, you could buy, it could be a rental, it could be a sale. Just be aware that a sole home with this restriction can be extremely expensive and cumbersome to follow through on, whereas a rental, for whatever reason, is a much easier option as the developer is, is concerned, from what we've been told by other developers, okay? So, you can look into that. But it's up to you, it's your responsibility to follow through on that one affordable unit where you may be.
He couldn't go before the ZBA to ask for a waiver, as, as Mr. Roberts did?
I would not be in favor of granting that waiver.
My, my, my vote would be to try to, if we're gonna develop this housing trust, to get as much money in as possible.
We don't know that we want to develop this housing trust. After, you know, this, uh, is Larry gonna be at the first meeting in January?
No.
Could be the first meeting in February. He is, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is investigating whether they could be one of these, uh, contractor to address affordable housing. Um, because there are some independent, the housing authority at Hadley wants no part of, uh, being responsible for the units other than what they have over in basically the Golden Corps area. And that was from the rest they got from the state, um, their state unit, as opposed to somebody else telling them that, they said, "Don't, you don't want that." Some of the local housing authorities and everything, they do, they do do that. I'm not sure about North Haven, but for the most part, the state is directing the local housing authorities not to oversee this, any units other than what they're directly responsible for, for whatever reason, and that's what they're being told, so they're complying with that. And when we put the housing trust in, the wording in number of years ago, and even we did it not too long before the senior housing, nobody said anything that they didn't want to do it. Mr. Roberts was putting in the senior housing on East Street, go, you probably heard what's happened with that. And he's, when he went to the housing authority, they says, "No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna oversee the project as far as making sure the affordable affordability is upheld," um, and, and directed, it was, it put us in book one, record we do. And because of that, he went to the ZBA, he got a variance to donate to the town something in lieu of this. And that's a bit of a quagmire right there, so we're letting, from my point of view, we're letting any developer coming forward now, with the housing trust, it's probably not an option for you, so we're letting you know upfront, before you put any money, or much of any money into the project, that you need to either provide a house, a, a unit onsite or offsite within the town. Because I don't know if the housing trust, um, it's a good idea in theory, but the devil in the details may make this not such a, not such a workable plan for the town, okay? So, I don't want to give you a false security here.
We can vote on whether or not it's gonna be an option, that's your opinion, right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct, but that, that, I'm letting you know upfront to, to come in with that, because I got a feeling that I don't, Mr. Mitch, I don't, Mr. Mitchkowski is not in favor of putting this into a trust. Joe is not in favor of putting it into a trust right now, because the trust doesn't exist, so we can't allow you to do something that doesn't happen, that we don't have right now. I'm not in favor of this right now for that simple reason, we have a housing trust, and we go forward with it. By the time you go through with your subdivision, you can always, if you come in with, say, "I'm gonna put the unit, just for speaking purposes, not to put words in your mouth, on Middle Street." Okay, this is where I want to do it. You come in, you put the subdivision in, we have a housing trust in place, you say, "Hey, I don't want to administer, I want to put the money into with the trust." That option will still be there for you, okay? But I don't want to let you, give you a sense of, I don't want to give you a pain, a, a false sense of security right now that the trust will be there, because we don't know that it will be. It's gonna go to town meeting for approval. Okay. Any other comments on this?
No, it's, uh, it is, it is a tough dilemma.
And we're, as far as the subdivision itself, though.
Yes, it is, and, uh, from subdivision point of view, certainly you have Dussette as your peer review engineer, and Dussette's gonna do the inspection as well, I assume, you know.
As far as.
And in other words, when you put the road in, we're not gonna be there to make sure there's fourteen inches of gravel compacted. So, Dussette would check that.
That would be the engineer of record, so as part of the subdivision, um, there are certain forms that need to be
Correct.
Signed off on by the engineer of record, which would be from our office.
Okay.
So, so we would, we would sign.
Responsibility.
Right, that responsibility would fall to us.
The only thing the town, uh, would like to do or see or witness is the water installation, so they would like to be on site.
Sure, water department.
Yeah, they're, uh, they're pretty adamant about that, so.
I know that, um, there's another reason to defer. I did, uh, get an email from Marla Warner asking me how to comment on this, and I haven't actually received any comments from him. So, you may want to reach out to him.
Yeah, we have.
Well, the, the email was a couple of days ago, asking how to make comments, so you might want to recontact him, just see what's on his mind now.
I think he was contacted primarily to see if, uh, the storm system needs to be on a separate parcel, or if under the cul-de-sac is appropriate.
There's not, is there going to be a spite space at the end of the cul-de-sac? The, uh, it's gonna be a buddy of the next property.
Uh, towards the west, I, do you want me to put up a plan?
No, just, uh, because that's always a concern.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I believe it's agricultural land towards the west, and it's also
To the west, correct.
To the west, and along the western edge, there's a lot, it's the site, the larger parcels are covered by, um, a number of conservation restrictions
Right.
Uh, in regards to, um, a brook that runs adjacent to the property line.
Yeah, the Russellville Brook, yeah, it's back there, so the end of the subdivision is a dive down, it's near where the, it's one lot further, or two, two streets further than where the power, uh, where the phone easement, or phone cable was laid.
So, so, if you get to the cul-de-sac, that last lot, that's, that'll be the end of, of any development of this property.
Any other questions?
Awesome, thanks.
Okay.
All right, so, do you have anything, any questions?
Just, I'm just trying to grasp the inclusionary zoning, is it, so, is it gonna make sense to come forward with some ideas on how to accomplish it, I mean, basically?
Well, you could build a house there.
With some of the stuff that's pending in terms of resolution, you think there could be an option to, to hold it, like, 'cause I know there's a phased-in table that's in the bylaw that says, you know, if you hit this percent, this percent has to be satisfied, in this case, eight lots at fifteen percent is, is effectively a one unit.
One lot, right, one, one unit.
One unit, right, so, what I'm, guess I'm getting is if, if, 'cause it might be difficult, it's almost like a ten thirty-one exchange in service of, you know, is there something out there? And in Hadley inventory can be difficult if you're looking for a rental unit, if there's not a lot that's always for sale. To look at a, a transitionary plan of escrow, we fund something temporarily while a resolution or a solution's in place, I just, I'm trying to think of timelines. They, they have that table to phase it in, I'm wondering if it's poss, or even holding a lot back until, you know what I mean, it's just a question of how all that lays out, timing, because there's not full clarity.
You're the first, you're the first person down this path, so, yes.
Yeah, I, I think, you're, you're, you're the first subdivision, so we're in virgin realms, obviously, and just like with the senior housing, we, we, we're still stumbling. We haven't got that one a hundred percent yet. And we don't want to have that happen here for both your sake and our sake. Luckily, you're not gonna go and put in, I don't think, all eight lots this year. You're probably gonna go in as far as whether we may be built, whatever, two, three, four, and then over the next several years. So, that one lot could be held back as what it, and the final lot.
To clarify, if he does find a rental unit, bodies, will the Hadley Housing Authority manage it?
No.
He will, he will respond.
He will be responsible.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity, he will need to make this rental unit affordable with a permanent deed restriction and go through, now, one good thing, by the time he gets around to doing this, we will have, hopefully, the information with the Prairie Valley Planning Commission, in fact, I would encourage you to attend the first Tuesday meeting in February, because Larry will be here for the Prairie Valley Planning Commission, he will be explaining to us what he's learned from going to these seminars, supposedly some kind of seminar on what it takes to do this, he was going to be one of the people supposedly trained to oversee this, and it may be very beneficial for you for a couple of reasons. What does this really mean to you? Can they really do this? He might have some kind of idea about par cost, and he could explain to you why a rental is so much cleaner to do this than a sell unit, okay? Because I don't fully understand that one myself. It's, 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 the housing trust is one thing, but the whole affordability factor, whether it's a trust, or rental, or actual ownership, is a complicated process, I'll leave it at that, okay? So I want you to know what you're getting into, on all views, and we wanna make sure that we do it the right way.
Do you have the deed restricted a lot, or a dwelling? Like, you know what I'm saying, is if, if we have a piece of land, and it's got the deed restriction, then?
We don't know that. I don't, we don't, it, good question, I unders, I don't know, but I don't wanna guess.
Well, if they had gone through with this at the senior housing on East Street, the owner doesn't own the lot, he owns the building, okay?
No, no.
The lot stays with the developer, or the, or the...
Those are condos, those are simply condos over there.
Same difference.
So, I don't know, I, I don't wanna guess, because it's, again, you're not having condos, you're having plain old single-family dwellers, and to deed restrict a single-family dwelling, I'm assuming you're probably gonna have relatively upscale buildings, and to have probably, pick a number, a rather expensive house, and to have somebody in the middle of this, put in something that's gonna be an affordable unit, you're not gonna have an affordable unit anywhere near of what Mr. Roberts would tell, I think it's, for this area, I think the affordability was...
Two twenty-five?
Two twenty-five a month, or two hundred, three hundred dollars a month, and probably the houses you wanna put up, I'm gonna guess, that probably wouldn't get taxes.
Taxes.
Okay, I'm imagining my house, I'm paying, I pay, I pay, just, I pay four hundred bucks, a little four hundred bucks a month of tax on my house, that's not, I mean, had a tax relatively good.
Yeah.
And, so, and it's no lot, and, so anyways, yeah, so that's, I'm guessing you probably, if you do anything, you probably wanna put something offsite, and rental would probably be your best option, but need to do a lot of research before we can answer that.
Right.
You know, as far as the subdivision, all they, Mr. Dwyer, like Mr. Rodriguez, and everybody else, it's pretty straightforward, you're training, works the road, works this and that, and everything else, few concerns and butters, address the concern and the but, if you have a right to do this, or they can't really stop it, but you can make it look as attractive as it can be.
Just a, a quick question that I have on that, is that something that would have to be in place for the planning board to approve the definitive subdivision application, or?
What's that, what, what has to be in place?
I think the, the rental unit, the offsite allocation.
We would like to have it in place, but because we have three options in the zoning bylaw, and only one of them is, doesn't really exist, which is the trust, we would like to at least have an idea of what he would wanna do, but we can be flexible because of the timeframe involved, he's not looking to, like, he's not looking to put all eight lots in this year, but that's not gonna happen. He'll put in a few this year, a few, you want to spread it out for a variety of reasons. And we can always hold one lot in escrow, and not release it until this is settled, and we wanted that we all realize, this has to be one of these options, and it's not negotiable, it has to be.
It may sound like we are, almost don't know what we're doing, it's, it's that close. The situation is, we have thirteen percent of our housing units are considered affordable, the highest in the valley, unusual, and what we do not wanna do is have that go below ten percent, so then any developer can come in and not only add a few units, but add a hundred units, so you know the impact in Sunland and other towns are facing. So, however, there's no wolf at our door, that we're gonna be immediately challenged on that front, because we have to get six hundred housing units built in town, and right now, we do ten or twelve houses a year, so it would take fifty years to really come down below ten percent, so, it's not that I'm against it, I think we have time before the wolf comes growling at our door regarding that ten percent threshold, so.
You know, that's the good part, we're not, we're not in a situation where we are screaming that we have an issue here. To be honest, Mr. Jalinas, eight homes wanting to be a drop in the bucket, however, a bunch of Mr. Jalinas' issue items comes in, eventually is going to have an impact, and like he said, the rate that we're going, Bill and I wanna be here fifty years from now and deciding, hey, we, we're in trouble here.
In my business, we call it being book dependent, thirteen percent is our book, just because we got it, doesn't mean you don't wanna add to it.
Right. We wanna stay, this is a, some are in a status quo, because, you know, this title of this board is planning boards, if we don't plan for the future, that's, that's a horrible thing for us not to be doing, that's all. So, we do have some time, and we can be patient on this item. It's, it's, it's the first one, and we don't wanna make the same mistake you made on the senior housing, where we just got into a jam. Okay, anything else?
There was a, as part of the application, we are requesting a number of waivers from the subdivision rules of rights, is that something that you wanted to discuss here tonight, right now?
No.
No.
We, we really should, because that, that kind of part of the public hearing, but they're probably pretty straightforward stuff.
Yeah, they're pretty straightforward, a couple, you know, one has to do with the hundred feet of intersection distance from the centerline of the roadway to a horizontal curve, we're a little shy of that, so just, we just wanted to gauge the, the board on how they feel, you know, how they feel.
Both of those items are not, they're, they're, they're reasonably flexible.
Okay.
Okay, and realize where you're gonna be putting any, that's not the person that's come up, and we're gonna be, okay, how could it can be, how can we kind of mitigate that by doing something or else?
True.
Okay, look at it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not terribly obvious.
It's not a rule that I tie by either.
Exactly.
Okay.
Was there any other, like, just spill my... Yeah, and then other, some other pretty technical that we can go with Dusset, that we'll hash out with Dusset.
Very good. Thank you, and see you, see you in a month, Merry Christmas, for holidays, as well. All right? Mr. Anderson, you're good, man?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm trying to clarify, you said, oh, that, two weeks, I think.
Yes, first Tuesday and, oh!
Did I put this sign up, I signed up now, or afterwards the next month?
Wait until you come back, get the signs approved.
Yeah.
They can't go up.
Yes. Put it off this evening?
No, second, that's what I have to do.
Take them down?
Yeah, take them down, yeah.
And if there's anything, alright.
You can call Gilbert and ABC, it's in the phone book, or call me in later.
Okay, that's fine. I'll be taking your information, that's mine, sure.
Okay, I'm just kinda website.
Okay, yeah. Thank you guys for your time, nice meeting you all, thank you.
Okay, the rules, items here, our pay for the quarter, motion to move our pay for the, I put it for the server for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes? The finance committee is having another meeting on December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, at six P M., and they're discussing budget issues, transfer funds for IT upgrades, usual stuff, just as brief information.
Don't we just move all of the other business forward to the next meeting?
Yes, I think so, 'cause I, John, I just, I just had a comment, um, the, oh, de-tapped accessory apartments, I was thinking about that, I'm half in favor and half against it, my concern is, if we just allow de-tapped accessory apartments, my concern is we're gonna see potentially these tiny houses coming into town. But, if we allow, to John's point, what he's really after, people that have a, have a garage that's not attached to the house, or have a shed, or a building or something that they'd like to convert, so if we allow de-tapped accessory apartments for buildings that are in existence at the time of the passage of the bylaw, then, I'm thinking I'll have a problem with that wording, 'cause they can't build something, they can only convert what they have, would hear that from John?
I have to think about it, it still bothers me, as a matter of principle.
Accessory apartments have bothered you since the outset.
Well, that's, that's okay, because certainly you see some towns get inundated, like Sunland, they thought they were doing a good thing by having apartments, only it's come back to bylaw, they're not collecting the revenue, yet it's generating, they have to generate a whole new school system, right?
But, think about that one, we're not gonna make a decision tonight, think about that one, and also allow new construction, but, but, I just wanted to make one more comment about apartments, when I first came on the planning board, Ambrose was totally in favor of apartments, and totally against business, and the five members on the planning board basically said, you know what, we don't think Hadley would be good for apartments, and we don't want apartments in Hadley, but we'll accept business, just the opposite of, of what happened, and there was a vision that they had, that I thought was, was pretty sound. I mean, we have a low tax rate, yes, Route Nine is sacrificed to the business world, but nevertheless...
It's not even that much of a sacrifice, you know, sacrifice is the wrong word. Route Nine in Natick, or something like that, I, my daughter went to Wellesley, I have driven on Route Nine in Natick, it is orders of magnitude, I agree, above what Route Nine is here.
Whatever happened to the traffic redesign on South Mantle Street, remember those guys, engineers?
That was connected to the expansion of Monk Farms Mall, and that hasn't happened.
Or that it happened, that didn't happen.
In fact, I think they are probably, those special permits probably lapse by now.
Oh, yeah, that's, that was well over two years ago. Okay, but just something to talk about, but John wants to be involved in that, so something to think.
Okay.
Okay, all the rest of stuff, just put out to the next, next agenda.
Yeah, it's gonna be a light.
There is no, there is nothing on the index agenda, because Mike won't be here, and hopefully Johnny will be, and, just, other things, the general information.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Meeting is history, thank you, thank you, John, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, safe holidays.
Always love and death.